To an afternoon, that kind of session was scheduled for six thirty P M to discuss personnel and medical issues. Call the meeting door. Do you have a cell phone? When you turn it off or are you outside? Mr. Borowski, will you please call the phone?
Mr. Houser.
Here.
Mrs. Cozer?
Here.
Dr. Lachlan?
Here.
Mr. May? Mrs. May?
Here.
Mr. McConan?
Here.
Mr. Music?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mrs. Sarek?
Here.
Dr. Thorch?
Here.
Down here.
Dr. Pepper, would you please give your report?
Sure, I just want to say we had a wonderful graduation and thank you for everybody who was able to attend. And I just wanted to congratulate high school administration, Mr. Maynes, and our advisor, Rachel Suter, and Emily Fenton, excuse me, Emily Fedor, I love that spook, for the ceremony. And thank you to Mr. Thomas and the buildings and grounds. It was a beautiful evening. We got, Thursday was a little, you know, on and off, not knowing if we were going to be able to hold the ceremony, but I think we made the right decision and it was outstanding. Our teachers' last day was yesterday and service day, as well as we had our retiree recognition. And I just want to thank all of the teachers that have served here, as well as any staff members, secretary of food service custodian for the Greater Lake Trail School District. That's it.
So let's open the report, Mr. Daniels.
On next meeting on your agenda, we will be approving a memory of understanding in employee discipline higher number one of the twenty twenty one.
And that's all. Education on planning, Mrs. Maynes?
Okay.
Do you want someone else to do that, Mrs. Maynes?
I'm waiting in here. Is anybody in here?
Yeah.
Yes, you can.
Okay, good.
Would you like me to do the enrollment update?
Yeah, would you like to do the enrollment update, Mr. Ferencio?
Um, I, you know, obviously, uh, school's over, but I did want to give an update on kindergarten. We are plus twelve from this time last year. Uh, Bagley is plus two, they're at sixty-three. L E S actually came up significantly, they're up to seventy-eight. But I believe Mrs. Holler told me that she had a bunch of students from preschool who had needed to enroll, so I believe they have. And Mountain View's down a little bit from this point last year. Uh, we're sitting right around two hundred students, so I do believe that we'll come right around, uh, the same number that we had last year, actually, in each building. So that's the enrollment update, Mrs. Maynes.
Thank you. On your agenda, we're going to be in, um, a resolution to approve the Westwood County community's particular grade agreement, um, there's steps against the equipment for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um, also on your agenda will be a resolution to approve the Williams' age, make the district agreements for the twenty, twenty-one school year. And also, um, to approve the W C N A six grade, having a tourist council, we know that the ondate is already doing the rate of the twenty-twenty-two and the state of high school model three. Also, um, next we will raise the interest rate by the state for the twenty-one school year, the elementary tuition rate will be nine thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-two cents, and the second year rate will be ten thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. The next critical committee meeting. That's all, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
I'm proud to call out every graduation.
Yeah, I'm glad I'm on a graduation tonight. It's storming here, Mrs. Maynes.
Thanks, Mr. Vice President. Um, attached, we review the Treasury report. Uh, we'll be voting on paying the bills next week and adoption of the operating budget that's to pay. We might discuss that now?
Yeah.
Okay, and Mr. Watson will, uh, take over. Joe Pope. Please go, Pope.
Whatever you need.
You'll have it.
You'll get it next week. It's a couple of months. Yes. If it doesn't, I'll give some notes, so you can remember.
Okay, everybody see that? There is copies of the budget presentation at the front desk, if anybody wants to talk to you. But tonight I want to present, for your consideration, what I would recommend that we adopt the final budget at. Um, very similar to last month's, uh, we'll be repetitive, but I also like to include every time, uh, this year, uh, this time of year, I like to do a quick review of Peasars' retirement and the impact that it has had on the district, the impact that it's had with this budget, um, and budgets moving forward. So I will, um... How about, there we go. Okay, so to start, let's start at a high level, let's take a look at it. Can you just do it for me?
I'm good with you. I'm not sure if you have the fist turned on. It's fine, I got it.
Hold on a second, let me try it.
Yep.
I got it.
All right.
Okay, so just at a very high level, um, currently we have, uh, we're proposing an expenditure budget of a little over fifty-seven point seven million dollars for next year. Um, that calls for a six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar, or one point one seven percent increase. Uh, the revenue budget, a little over fifty-seven point four million, which is a little over three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar increase, or point five six percent. Uh, so based on that information, our projected shortfall is about three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars at this time. So to do a quick review, a summary of our, uh, major expenditure increases, as I mentioned last month, salary attempted to go up by a little over six hundred thousand dollars, uh, or two point two five percent. Um, we, remember, we have over four hundred employees within the district, and they're all encapsulated in that six hundred and six thousand dollars. Also, that six hundred and six thousand dollars includes the adjustment we made to several of our pay plans, uh, such as our classroom assistance, our personal care assistance, and our health care assistance. That's all included into those, uh, salary benefits. Peasars' retirement is going up by, uh, a little over three hundred thousand, three point five nine percent. Just a reminder, state mandated, no local control. Um, the employer contribution rate, the state increased from thirty-four point five one percent to thirty-four point nine two percent for next year. Last month when I talked, I tried to talk about, you know, things that are more controllable and things that are less controllable. This one is strictly mainly uncontrollable. It's, like I said, state law, the, uh, the, uh, the board does not determine what the employer contribution level is, that's set by the state. Now, I'll review the history of that mandated cost on an upcoming slide, um, so that we'll get more into that, uh, in, in the future here.
Just before you move on, Mr. Watson, when you get back to the first slide?
Yes.
Can you go back there? So... Just to put it in perspective, we, this, the district is a, a one-hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar-a-year business with four hundred employees and four thousand clients.
Right.
Plus their families.
Yes.
That's how huge it is.
Yes. And, and, and to your point, um, Mr. Palmer, like, you know, we do, you'll see, I break it out, and I say fifty-seven in expenditures and fifty-seven in revenue, but truthfully, it's, you know, one, one hundred and fourteen million dollars is what we are responsible for accounting for reporting, when there are a lot of moving parts to that. So sometimes, you know, your revenue's coming a li- a little lower, and your expenditure's coming a little higher, so you might have a greater shortfall in one year than in, in the next year.
Yeah, I bring this up now because we get to the point where we start talking about the other issues and about the, you know, you know, the military. And just so they can under- that folks can understand that out of a hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar-a-year business with four thousand clients and four hundred employees, we're talking about a very minute number. And we've kept at a very minute military. And the only thing that's driving that, other than the costs we've brought down as a team, as a district, and the teachers, and staff, and everybody else brought it down, is the Peasars' impact. If we didn't have that, we'd be even, and that would be the three forty-five.
Yes, correct. Yep, and I will highlight that here, coming up. Um, so... The next piece that I wanted to talk about, insurance, and, you know, there are years where our insurances go up a little bit higher than this, but, uh, recently, our insurance costs, and that's for medical, dental, vision, life, has gone up very, very minimally, and you can see there's about a thirty-four thousand dollar increase. And I like to highlight, you know, that we do participate in the self-funded health and care consortium, um, assist with controlling these costs. We participate in the countywide consortium. It's been excellent partnership, and it's helped us to control, you know, this, the budget line item is around four billion dollars, it's only going up, thirty-four thousand dollars next year. You know, the market trend, uh, in the market, uh, it trends, the annual premium increases by roughly ten percent per year. Our consortium ten-year trend is about two point six percent. The five-year trend is about one point two percent. Um, so it's been a really, really good partnership, and it has helped us to control those costs so that we can allocate more of our money to Peasars' retirement to cover those mandated costs. Okay, so what have we been able to decrease? Because as you can see, you know, when we were looking at about six hundred thousand dollar, uh, increase, so obviously we had to, had to decrease certain areas. Building department budgets are, are somewhat controllable, so we cut those by about two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. They were significantly cut last year. Uh, the main areas are technology, we still have a budget line item for technology, but, uh, new technology purchases and replacement equipment, uh, we plan to use ESRS money for that, because everybody's aware, we're getting ESRS, we received ESRS one, and we'll be getting ESRS two and three funding, um, coming up in the next several years. So our plan is to use those funds to make up for any shortfall that we have in the technology ground or in curriculum staff development. We believe that if we utilize monies to develop the, the, the new curriculum and, and, you know, assist with the staff development and purchase the technology, when that ESRS money goes away, we'll be set, you know, where we need to be for, let's say, the next five years, and then we can slowly rebuild that budget line item. It's not like there's going to be a real big hole in our budget when that revenue stream goes away. So that's why I think it's an acceptable use of that money. So we, as I mentioned, we plan to use ESRS money to support these needs in these areas as needed. Okay? So now here's where I wanted to talk about Peasars' retirement. So this is just a, a, a slide that I do every single year. So our expenditure history review, not including Peasars' retirement. So two thousand nine, ten, if you take that one budget line item out, our actual expenditures in all other areas was a, was right around forty-seven point two million dollars, okay? Again, it's not including Peasars' retirement. I just wanted to make a note, the state has a hundred-and-twenty-one state-approved expenditure categories, okay, a hundred-and-twenty-one. This area represents a hundred-and-twenty, because on the next slide I'm going to talk about the one, which is Peasars' retirement. Okay, so of the one hundred-and-twenty-one, this number represents our cost for a hundred-and-twenty state-approved expenditure categories. So let's go, ten years later, the reason I'm using twenty nineteen, twenty twenty actual expenditures is because it's the most recently audited numbers, so these are, these are factual numbers, not numbers that I'm pulling out of the air, you can pull our local audit, and these numbers are in there. So we spend currently forty-nine point two million dollars when you back Peasars' retirement. Now, again, it's over those one hundred-and-twenty state-approved expenditure categories. So over a ten-year period, those one hundred-and-twenty categories have increased by two million dollars, or four point three one percent over a ten-year span. So on average, all other areas, other than Peasars' retirement, increase around two hundred thousand dollars per year, or point four three percent. So what that's saying is, you know, we are obviously making cuts in several areas to offset Peasars' retirement, because we're not, we haven't been increasing taxes, and we haven't been increasing, uh, spending, uh, at the rates that, you know, the Peasars' retirement budget and line item would call for. We've been able to reduce it because we've been reducing all of those other one hundred-and-twenty-eight state-approved expenditure categories over a period of time. So now if we look at just Peasars' retirement only, okay, in two thousand nine, ten, just Peasars' retirement, just that one line item, one out of one hundred-and-twenty categories, okay? It, the, the, uh, the amount, or the actual expenditure dollar that we spend in that area is a little over one billion, it made up two percent of our operations, okay? So as I mentioned, it's just one of the one hundred-and-twenty state-approved expenditure categories. Ten years later, we're spending eight billion dollars a year, okay? Eight billion dollars a year, that is now, it's fourteen percent of our operations. So we went from one million to eight million over a ten-year period. That's a seven billion dollar increase, which is a six hundred and eighty-seven percent increase. So the average increase is seven hundred thousand, or sixty-nine percent per year. Okay, so basically what this is telling us is, you know, over the one hundred-and-twenty-one state-approved categories, our expenditures are growing up on average by nine hundred thousand dollars. They're increasing two hundred thousand dollars in a hundred-and-twenty categories total, it's seven hundred thousand dollars in one category, which is Peasars' retirement. So that's pretty significant, that's pretty telling. Um, so just remember that.
It's criminal.
It's, yes, yes, it is. So this is just a chart, the black bars show what our total operating costs are, um, which includes the Peasars' retirement budget line item. The orange bars is what our actual expenditures are when you remove Peasars' retirement, so basically, it's the one, only the one hundred-and-twenty state-approved budget categories are listed in the, uh, in the orange bar. And as you can see, uh, when you include the Peasars' retirement, there's a huge spike. Okay, so, you know, I, I shared with our finance committee, you know, COVID has kind of thrown things out of whack, so that's why I spent a lot of time last month, and I want to touch on it very briefly here, is, what are, what do our trends tell us? So if we look back five years and ten years, and last month I focused on the five-year little back, I'm going to focus on the ten-year little back now, because it ties into what I just shared regarding Peasars', how, how much do our expenditures go up every year? And how much do our revenues go up every year? Because, yes, we're going to get an influx of federal dollars through ESRS, but that money's going to go away in twenty twenty-four. And I don't want anybody to sit here and look at me in three years and say, hey, you just lost a huge revenue stream, you have to stop, all of these expenditures now over a year, okay? So I think we need to continue to plan over the next several years as, you know, and utilize our history as our baseline moving forward on how we prepare our future budgets. So our ten-year actual expenditure and revenue trends. On average, our total expenditures increased by over nine hundred thousand dollars. Again, I touched on this at the May eleventh presentation. It also kind of ties into what I just shared before with two hundred thousand dollar increase in a hundred-and-twenty categories and seven hundred thousand in one category. Obviously, you can do the math, and you can see our total expenditure increases are over nine hundred thousand dollars per year. Assuming no millage increase, and I was asked, why are you back in the millage? Well, we just want to know, what is our, what is our normal natural growth, whether it's local, state, or federal dollars, without adjusting taxes at all? Because once we know what that is, then we can do the math and kind of figure out how much of a, a, a tax adjustment would need to occur. So on average, total revenues increased by over five hundred thousand dollars. That creates a shortfall of roughly four hundred thousand dollars, which is a little over a million. This is just a chart depicting that. The orange, uh, line is what our total expenditures are. The black line is what our total revenues would be when you back out millage rate. So if you do nothing, and if you have an adjusted millage, you can see that the gap that would be created. And the reason I, I know this is over a ten-year period, but I just want everybody to be cautious over the next three years, if everybody thinks we're going to fill this gap with that one-time stimulus money that's going to disappear, we're going to put ourselves and our community in a bad spot in twenty twenty-four. And I'm talking about, we're going to be talking about programs. And I know that Greater Lake Trail School community values programs, and that's not a discussion that we want to be having with our community. So we need to continue to plan, um, as we would, without COVID being in place and impacting the way that it is. So with all of that said, what we're, I'm proposing is to approve a final budget of a little over fifty-seven point seven million dollars. The millage impact would be one mil increase, because that's what trend has shown we need. Trend's shown we need about one mil per year. It would take our millage rate from eighty-four to eighty-five mils, the impact it would have on an average homeowner would be twenty-seven dollars per year. So one mil equates to twenty-seven dollars per year to the average homeowner. Always like to do the Westwood County Village, Village Review. If you look at two thousand nine, two thousand ten, the highest millage rate in, in the county was a little less than eighty-three. The lowest one was a little less than sixty-four mils. The average was a little under seventy-three mils, and Greater Lake Trail was at sixty-nine. In twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, most recent tax year, the highest is a little under a hundred and one mils. The lowest is a little more than eighty-three mils. The average is a little less than eighty-nine mils. We are at eighty-four mils, and again, this is in current year, eighty-four mils, which means we have the fourth lowest in the county. It always fluctuates between the third and the fourth in the county, but there's two schools that are very, very close together. So I just think that's a positive to take from this. I understand that, you know, I'd love to stand up there and say we do not need a tax increase, um, but I don't think that that would be being responsible to our taxpayers, um, you know, to say that, because history has shown that that's not necessarily the case. But history also has shown that we've done a very good job, in my opinion, the board has done a good job of, uh, adjusting taxes moderately when needed. And, and, you know, Peasars' retirement, we've called for a much higher tax increase, we've cut in other areas to, you know, keep it within one, yes, not a couple.
I think it's important to note there are seventeen school districts in our county.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out, seventeen school districts in our county, that's a good point. So are there any questions? Okay, between now and, and next week, as always, call me, text me, if there's something else you want to discuss, I'm happy to share it with you, okay?
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. Oh, Dr. Thorch, have a question.
I just have a question. First of all, I would like to thank our Greater Lake Trail School District Administration and staff for getting us through a fantastically difficult year. If you look at what happened in our country, we have lots of schools that never, ever did, when you go back to Brickhampton, there's kids who graduate, I mean, this is ridiculous. We had our kids in school most of the year, we had a pause there, unfortunately, we had to do it because of circumstances. But if you look at what this school district has done compared to what the country has done, I think they've done a fantastic job. And I think for us to ask for a one-year increase, nobody wants to pay increases in taxes, but to understand what this Peasars means to our school district budget, and to understand what our teachers done, and our staff have done this year to get these kids through this, I think it's a minimal intrusion on people's budgets. I mean, this was a very, very difficult year. My concern was when this first happened, that we would be asking for a heck of a lot more money, because we had discussions last year about how this is impacting revenue.
And, and, you know, the, the good news, and I've shared this with the finance committee, there is a, there is a real concern that our, our earned income tax is going to drop from three point nine nine to three point one, which is very significant. While it's declined a little bit, it hasn't dropped as much as, as the state projected that it will drop. And I do believe that it's going to get back to full capacity within the next year or so. The one that's really hurting us is return on investments. You know, we were generating about six hundred thousand dollars a year in interest, now we're generating about twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars a year. That one's not going to come back quite as fast, but real, really transfer tax is going up, so there's been some things kind of offset it, so we're in a little bit better situation than we thought we were going to be.
So I think the overall picture here is just unwavering, yeah, I, I commend you for what you've done, I commend your work, I mean, it's a lot that I found about this job, it was amazing. We're lucky to have, we're lucky to have this staff, I'm telling you, this, this was above and beyond, above and beyond. A lot of school districts basically just threw up their hands and said, F it all, and just shut the door. We didn't do that. We went ahead. It was scary for a lot of people, it was scary for our community, it's scary for the staff, but they persevered, they did it. My God, I'm still wearing a mask, you know, I've been vaccinated, I'm still scared, you know, a lot of people are still scared, it's true. You know, they've persevered, it's a hard work, they've done a great job. And I think asking us for a tax increase on our residents, I hate to ask for decreased taxes, but, you know, I've always been the guy on the school board that says, we used to pinch pennies to a blade. And I still think we did, but I think we're doing, doing a good job for the school district and the programs that we, we provide. So I, I think, I think you've done a good job, and I appreciate it. So thank you all for the work you've done, your hard work, and the time you've wasted. You guys got a good, people matter to me, I'm glad, it's fantastic, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
So continuing on, um, we're asking board to approve, to approve the option of twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two millage levy, see the attachment. Also, authorize twenty twenty-one Homestead, Parkstead Exclusion Act, and the attachment's also there. Reinvestment of Act five eleven taxes for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Approve extension of Section one twenty-five cash benefit cap for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, see the attachment. Approve twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two insurance renewals, see the attachment. Approve online services proposal, see attachment. Approve the tax bill settlement proposal for parcel number sixty-one dash oh eight dash zero zero dash zero dash two five oh, and parcel number sixty-one oh eight one six dash one six dash zero, oh, dash one point six, as recommended by Andrew Spreza Hall State. And our next finance committee meeting will be Tuesday, August seventeen, five thirty, here at the Senior High School. Thank you, Mr. President.
Can you make a, the former, if I could just interject, we have Mr. Cassidy here to talk about the, um, insurance renewals, if you could give him a minute?
At my age, I need all the minutes I have.
Mr. Cassidy, come on, thank you. Richard, Richard comes and texts on June, once, 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 once a year, so I want him to be able to speak a little bit of coverage as well.
So, uh, with the insurance, you know, there's probably forty pages of, uh, detailed information, but this will be, this will be a high-level, uh, overview. Um, so I've broken it down into the different segments of the insurance. First is the property liability. Um, last year to this year, the premium difference is about four point six percent, which is made up mainly of, um, the building value, which is a blanket limit of a hundred ninety-four million, that is up to a hundred ninety million. The P S B A program does evaluation every year of the, uh, buildings to make sure that they're up to the replacement costs. Next year, uh, we may see higher increases just because of what we're seeing with construction costs, cost of two-by-furters, cost of driveway. So the inflation may be adjusted next year, uh, more than the normal two, three percent of, we'll see next year. Some of the additional coverage that are part of the program, flood, earthquake, equipment breakdown for all the equipment in the buildings, um, and then the mine subsidence coverage, which is available through the D E P, is separate and direct through the D E P. Now, from a liability standpoint, liability coverage is of the same class here. The main pieces to the P S B A program are the law enforcement liability, abuse and molestation, violent incident protection, and host liquor liability. When you're having a function, you're serving alcohol, the liquor liability is included. So the next piece is the auto. Auto is basically about the same as last year, coverage is the same, the, uh, vehicles went from sixteen to seventeen, and the premium went down eight hundred and fourteen dollars. Uh, and the insurance company, your insurance does provide a driver screening program for any drivers, an, uh, annual review, they do the, um, both vehicle reports. Workers' comp, coverage is the same, nothing has changed on workers' compensation. From a rating standpoint, the claim experience went from one point zero five down to one point zero one. The safety committee has been re-certified, and that gives you an additional five percent credit. Uh, so the premium on last year, this year is down, um, twenty-three hundred dollars. The school leaders, errors of mission, coverage is the same. Uh, pricing difference is about three percent, and, uh, currently, the P S B A program is still the most comprehensive coverage, um, that's on the private marketplace, just because school districts, not every insurance company has a program for school districts. It's very unique. The umbrella, coverage is the same, and again, the main exposure on the umbrella is the general liability, school leaders, and the auto. You always forget about auto, but auto is usually one of the most catastrophic You always forget about auto, but auto is usually one of the most catastrophic liability because of the accidents and the damages that it can cause. The umbrella does cover over top. Student accident, same coverage, same pricing, has not changed, has not changed since two thousand and sixteen. The travel and accident, so same coverage, same pricing, again, seven-hundred and fifty dollars in. Public official punishment, same coverage, same pricing, it's only a hundred-dollar fine. Next one, cyber, I'll do a little bit more attention on cyber, just because of what we've seen in the news and all the attention it's gotten. So, cyber planes, as you've noticed, have been on the rise, small local planes to national to global planes, okay? So, the premium went from ninety-six-hundred to twelve thousand, and again, just because of the exposures. Now, the policy covers your cyber response expenses, your data recovery expenses, again, million-dollar limits that you have. It also covers third-party liability. If there's a breach and there's third-party liability against the school, that is covered. Now, one thing that's getting some attention is called social engineering. So, social engineering is when someone tricks you through a fake email, through a computer transaction, to transfer money voluntarily, you transfer it to the wrong account. If you transfer voluntarily, insurance does not cover that. However, your cyber policy does, and RE personally has already had, this year, three planes. So, and I'm talking small, local businesses, not global companies, so the claims are on the rise. So, in some way, the PSBA program with the property and general liability, the eras of mission, school leaders, and umbrella, still is best pricing and comprehensive coverage that's on the marketplace of Pennsylvania. And then the other pieces, we recommend the current incumbent carriers. Again, each year, we go to different markets to see from a competitive standpoint, so each year, we look at the different companies, and again, there's only a limited number, but so far, the PSBA program and the other companies that we have, especially for the workers' comp, are still the most competitive. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For facilities operations planning, Mr. Palmer.
Mr. Vice President, I would ask the board to approve renewal of the elevator service contract, reduce the elevator service and sales company next week, our next meeting, and award quotes and other bids for the twenty twenty-one capital improvement projects, see attached. Our next facilities operations planning meeting is tomorrow, um, right?
Thursday.
Or thir-
Thursday.
Oh, Thursday.
January, Thursday.
Three-thirty, at the Atletico. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Student activities and recreations, Mr. Musin.
Uh, thank you.
Mr. Musin.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The next student activities and recreation committee meeting is to be determined, and moving on to the transportation committee report, the next transportation committee meeting also is to be determined, in my opinion.
Thank you. Community relations, Mrs. Kozar.
Thank you, Mr. McCollums. At the next meeting, we will be looking for approval on the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two free and reduced price meal policy, as well as the national school breakfast program and the national school lunch program, all for the year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. As well, attached to your agenda is the minutes from the Lake Trail GLSD Park and Rec meeting, which was held on April the fifteenth. So, that's attached for your review. And the next meeting of the Park and Rec Commission will be Thursday, June the seventeenth, at four P M. at the Lake Trail Municipal Building Council Chambers. Thank you, Mr. McCollums.
Thank you. What more are you ready, you have some, Mr. Mayes?
Yeah, thank you. The next week on your agenda will be a relevant witness award, the home anchor's performance paper bid for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, for the joint purchasing and storage game, also on for, uh, in the, no. The summary of the W I B board meeting from the Canadian Hall of Fame, twenty fifth, twenty twenty-one, or at half for your rate, and, um, and W I B committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, June one second, twenty twenty-one, at seven o'clock P M. at the board meeting, number of the W I B bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayes. E W C T C Joint Operating Committee, Mrs. Kozar.
I don't think, Mrs. Kozar, we can pass it. Mr. Palmer, would you mind?
Sure. Um, I'm sorry, I was muted. You can go ahead and take it. Thank you. Thanks, I. Um, E W C T C Joint Operating Committee meeting minutes from our last meeting in May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, attached for your review, and our next meeting will be June twenty-third at seven P M. at the E W C T C. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Board policy, the PSBA, where is one, Mrs. Kozar?
We have no report today, Mr. McCollums, and the next board policy committee meeting is to be determined. Thank you.
Technology, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, and I have my report proceeding, and our next meeting is to be determined.
Thank you. Two potential recommendations, Mr. Dr. Keppler.
Thank you. I will be asking the board to approve resignations as stated on the agenda, and also to approve professional personnel, including a secondary math teacher, two special education teachers, and a technology and computer science education teacher. I would also be asking the board to approve support personnel appointments, including summer workers, substitute secretaries, as well as a full-time secretary for Bagley Elementary School. Supplemental positions, I would ask the board to appoint a band director assistant, cheerleader assistant coach, and a golf junior varsity coach. Also, the board will be asked to give permission to our realigned staff for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and to approve teacher leader positions and salaries for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. The approve, approval for classified personnel hourly grades of pay to be effective July first, two thousand and twenty-one, for part-time secretaries, substitute secretaries, substitute custodians, substitute food service employees, substitute personal assistants, substitute classroom assistants, and student workers as well. And to approve on-road driver education instructors for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year, Anthony Vassiano, Jason Bridge, Joseph McCully, and Scott Saber. There will also be a resolution to approve a sabbatical day, sabbatical leave for a teacher. And our next board meeting dates, we have our board meeting, regular board meeting has been changed to Tuesday, June fifteenth, which is next Tuesday, here at seven-thirty P M. No board meetings will be held in July, and we will be back for our committee, the whole meeting, Tuesday, August seventeenth, and our regular board meeting, Tuesday, August twenty-fourth. And at the beginning of the meeting, I felt to recognize and welcome Dr. Rhonda Watlin, our newly appointed board member, and thank you for joining us, Dr. Watlin.
That's it?
That's it.
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight, and over the quick range to get to the board's committee. Meetings adjourned.